Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Hollibar.
Present.
Councilmember Fong.
Right here.
Vice Mayor Pappen. Mayor Aliva.
Here.
All council members are present.
Sorry, guys, could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think Tom wanted to do something really quick before we get into our goal.
I did, Mayor. Thank you very much. It's not on the agenda. I was going to do it during my city manager comments this evening. And I think Jennifer Lim is logged into the meeting, and she has to leave at six. But if you could please, Elaine, bring up the certificate. I wanted to present this certificate of commendation to Jennifer. As you all know, with Elaine going out on maternity leave, we were doing more with less here at the city during a very critical time in our history, a very busy time. And I wanted to just recognize and commend Jennifer for her exemplary work and performance throughout one of the most critical times in the history of Millbrae. She provided unparalleled teamwork, initiative, and professionalism, not only in just the day-to-day operations of the city manager's office, and really being a key team player in the office, but also ensuring compliance as we went through the California Boaters Rights Act process. So ensuring compliance with state law and forming five new council districts. She was here on Saturdays helping vote and water on myself. And I wanted to just commend her publicly and recognize her for her outstanding work here in the city manager's office. So Jennifer, thank you very much. It was amazing, the work that you did and how you stepped up while Elaine on maternity leave. So congratulations on a job well done, and we hope that you stay with our organization for many, many years in the future. So again, thank you.
Very nice. Jennifer, thank you from all of us. Thank you very much. And I would agree with what our city manager says. I really hope that you continue to stay and work with us for many years to come. Is she there? Where is she? I don't see her. I don't see Jennifer. Tom, you're on. There you are.
Yes, I don't think she's logged in, but she can, she can hear you. She's, she's here in the office with me, so she heard everything.
Beautiful. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, Kathy, I think we're gonna turn this over to you, unless Tommy wanted to introduce anything, or do you want to give out the outline for today?
No, I, you know, I think you all have the PowerPoint. Unless you have any questions because of time, we can turn it right over to Kathy and get moving with Strategic Initiatives four through six.
Okay, we might, Eduardo, let's just show what we did last time to remind everybody if we go to Strategic Initiative one through three, your summary slide, this is what you all voted for. These are the things that were important to you two weeks ago. Hopefully, they still are. We may have to, as we go through the next three, end up winnowing the numbers down a little bit. This is, this is nineteen. That's a lot, and it's only half. I believe that after your comments about combining some things, I think Tom and his team did some work on this. Is that true, Tom? That, did you kind of combine a few that were said, expressed differently, but were the same thing?
We did, Kathy, and, and as we go through it, you know, in Initiatives four, five, and six, hopefully that becomes evident. But we did narrow it down quite a bit.
Good. Great. Thank you.
But I should say, we did not eliminate anyone's goals, but we did combine them into, as Kathy mentioned, and as you directed, similar topics.
Yeah. Great. And so, Eduardo, if you just briefly go through SI one, so people can see that what you've done, the work on this, is now, next slide, which I believe shows SI one, and what, everything that was on it and below are all the totals of votes and what was voted on as the, as what you considered most appropriate. And SI two, we can move to same thing. I believe you all have this PowerPoint and hopefully have had an opportunity to look at it or print it out, so you can see it better. I don't know about you, but I need my glasses for some of these things. I hate to admit it. Okay, the next one, SI three. And we will revisit these before we get done today. So don't, don't worry if you feel very strongly about something. We're gonna have another vote. And now let's move on to what we haven't covered, which is SI four. And this is city government and organizational success. So we're gonna do this the same way to be consistent. And then after we finish all six, you'll have the opportunity to go back and vote on your top ones of all of them. And fortunately, Elaine is here to keep track because it gets a little confusing. And so if you would like, I'm gonna, actually, I wrote your names alphabetically, so now I'm not gonna get confused on who I've called on and who I haven't this week. And so would you like to pick your first one or two and pitch it, sales pitch, to get the votes? And so I'm gonna call on Anders first. Alphabetically, you come first.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. So I want to talk about fifty-seven a little bit. You know, how we need to value our multilingual staffing, the ability to speak multiple languages, as well as, you know, the access for government meetings and documentation, how important this multilingual play into all of that. And I'm going to ask you all just, to just kind of imagine a scenario where a senior lady, say, from, from Guatemala, for example, who just got, you know, moved into an ADU unit in the east side, for example, and wanted to know how to turn on water and pay our water bills, and she walks into our city hall and asks some questions, and how valuable it would be for us to be able to offer someone like, for example, Eduardo, who can speak the language, and be able to help the senior by offering a pamphlet that has both English and Spanish on it, for example, and be able to help, you know, these new community members, you know, with the information that they need and how valuable that surface would be. Same thing, you know, for another person, for example, of Asian descent would benefit from the same surfaces. I mean, we all know that we have a huge ethnic community here in Millbrae, and so I think we need to be able to offer equitable services to everyone in our community. So I think this commitment we need to make here in terms of being able to have equitable access for government multilingual services.
Great. Thank you so much, Anders. And Anne, how about you? And Schneider?
Okay, I hear what Anders is saying, but I'm gonna talk about the grant team. City of Millbrae has a small staff. The larger cities, who, from my observation at the CCG and other levels, are much more successful in bringing in grants, they have larger staff, they have some staff members who are more, maybe more trained. I don't want to say professional, but grant writing is a very unique skill. And I would really like to see amongst our various departments, we identify some employees, we get them the training on grant writing. With a, to get a grant, you have to actually write to what that grant wants to fund. It isn't always what we want to do. And I think we could really improve our ability to get grants by bringing, bringing together a team. It might be cross-departmental to do that. And possibly also, we have some amazing grant writers in our community of even opening it up to, I always point out Sherri Torezzi, who wrote grants for the Girl Scouts of this greater Bay Area, I believe. So people with this very select skill that we could use to bring money in. My other one would be, I strongly support, I heard there was talk about separating the Bike Pedestrian Commission as a standalone committee. We are lacking in terms of how we get our points because we don't have actually a pedestrian or a senior on that committee that bring in viewpoints, which again, make our grant applications and our programs stronger on that. So those are the two that I am, I like everyone on here. I would also say that part of the problem with our CERT, now that we're under CCFD, our CERT members had an issue that happened about a year ago this time. And I just want to make sure, this may not have to be a goal, that as we work on our hazard mitigation plan, which is a staff level action, that we include the CERT members in there, or if we do anything along the lines of getting our neighborhood watch program going, that we combine the two. This is really how we, as a community, will respond to any kind of disaster, whether it's an anthrax and you have to bring pills, or a fire, or an earthquake, or heat, a heat, a prolonged heat wave, where we've got seniors and young children at home, and we might need to really go door-to-door on them. So just incorporate them in. Those are my three for organizational success.
Great. Thank you so much. And how about Annie?
Sure. So I think that with regards to number fifty-two and number fifty-seven, they all kind of fall under fifty-one, and that would be my priority, staff development and training. We, we all have mentioned many times throughout the year that we wanted to take that next step. And I think that, you know, we're gonna be here today and gone tomorrow, all of us, as regards to our, our jobs, but our development and our training to our staff, which is the foundation of which we'll go forward in the, you know, the ten-year plan, the twenty-year plan. I think that fifty-one is most important, and I, we've made some strides to that. We've, we've talked about this in numerous ways. But with their, with their value of multilingual staffing and access for, you know, different languages in different meetings and documents, I think that's all part of staff development and training. And of course, you know, the grant team could come along with that.
Great. Thank you so much. Gina?
Thank you. I agree with the mayor as to the emphasis on staff and development training. That also goes back, I used to be the deputy director of a state agency. So if we can even train our staff that when you do apply for a grant, you can actually go to the agency that's giving it out for assistance on what they're looking for in applications and stuff like that. And I think a lot of people don't understand that. Now, that might take bringing in someone to advise staff on that, but I do think it's very, very important. And we've been successful, compliments to some of the existing staff who know to go look for different grants. So I do think staff development and training is exceptionally important. And I'm gonna emphasize fifty-five, improving the website and making sure staff is accessible and accountable. I really think that plays into fifty-seven, being multilingual staffing, accessing government, accessing documents. I think these all play into one another, and I think those two are extremely important as we progress as an agency. Because the one thing we'll hear about all the time is that, you know, I didn't get through to somebody, or I don't know where to go. I can't find it on the website. And this really reflects on the staff and the entire city. So to make things move more smoothly as far as government operations and organization for success, I think fifty-one and fifty-five are extremely important and would aid us in getting to some of the others. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Gina Rubin?
Yes, I think I'm gonna echo a couple of my colleagues here. Fifty-one, I think, is most important, in my opinion. It's important that we have a staff that is well-trained, that has opportunities for growth and motion. And sometimes that could involve bringing in, you know, an outside consultant like yourself to do some of these trainings. And we'd be happy to work with your team or other teams like you to get to that point. But I think that's important to be able to retain talent, to grow talent, and offer the best service that we can to our community.
Great. Thank you so much, all of you. Okay, and just last time we did, we're gonna do the same thing. Vote for your top three. The first one, you're gonna give, get three points. Yes, yes, I see an hand. Anne?
Well, before we go there, because we didn't have time the last time, when we thought we'd do all six, since I wrote, create a grant team, and I heard what everybody said, and I would be happy to subvert the grant team under fifty-one. Can we do that kind of combining if we see things that are combining in there?
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for clarity, I, I think they're two different things, right? One is training and staff development for writing grants, and the other is kind of what the discussion is, is a grant team, perhaps an outside, you know, consultant, or a series of consultants that may know the subject matter. So I, just from a management perspective, I, I think realistically, if we're gonna implement something, those are two different things.
Okay. Well, I was gonna try to have us all have our cake and eat it, too. Fifty-three is something that the city manager and I talked about. Millbrae, compared to other cities, has some really out-of-date ordinances that we just haven't gotten to them. And the one that most excites is the lacking of a tree ordinance, which means, for example, with Anton, we had to fight, and thank you, planning staff, for getting a two-to-one tree replacement, but we're cutting down mature trees and planting little bitty trees. They're not the same thing. So what fifty-three is, is a need to look at some of the ordinances that are really hurting us citywide because we haven't had the time to get to them. So.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and vote, and we will revisit all of these at the end. So I'm, as usual, kind of moving this along. So if you all, because some people may be watching this on the website or on, on the internet or television or whatever, when you vote, you know that you're getting, your, your first choice, you get three points. Your second choice, you get two. Your third choice, you get one. So if you would do it by both number and say what it is, because the people may not have a copy of our PowerPoint. So for example, I, of course, would vote for number fifty-one, staff development and training, for my first choice, and so forth. So let's do it. Anders, what are your, what are your three? First choice. I think you're on mute.
Excuse me. Thank you, Kathy. So I think, you know, in terms of, you know, I heard some of my colleague a little earlier. You know, I do believe that improving our website is important, and it plays into part of how, you know, we ensure multilingual access to our government on both meetings as well as documentation. The website is part of that as well. So I would say between fifty-seven and fifty-five, those are my top two. And then we certainly want to make sure we have sufficient staff training and development.
Now, fifty-seven, we're gonna, fifty-seven, we're doing next because that's on SI five. We're just doing SI four for now? Mine at least goes to fifty-six unless it's been changed.
Fifty-seven's on it.
It's on fifty-seven.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at hard copy here. Okay, so would you say fifty-one is your number one, your three-pointer?
Let me repeat. It's fifty, fifty-seven, fifty-five, and then fifty-one.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Anne?
Fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-three. Did you repeat that?
Fifty-two, grant team, fifty-four, separate B-PAC, fifty-three, update ordinances and regulations.
Great. Thank you. That's great. Yes, if you'd say the number and actually what it is, so the people that are watching, if they can't read the PowerPoint, they can hear it. Thank you. Annie?
Fifty, excuse me, fifty-one, staff development, fifty-five, website, fifty-seven, multilingual staffing.
Great. Thank you. Gina?
I'm gonna go improving the website.
That's fifty-five? That's your first choice?
Yeah, I was trying to wait for her to type it in. Sorry. Then I'll move to fifty-one, which is staff development and training, and then fifty-seven, value of multilingual staffing.
Great. Thank you. Have you got that, Elaine?
She got it. It's on the board.
Good. Great. Rubin?
Fifty-one, staff development and training. Fifty-two, grant team, and fifty-three, updates of the ordinances.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now we give Elaine a little chance to add these numbers up. Three points for your first choice, two for your second, and three for your third. Now, last time we did allow.
So Elaine needs to.
You can vote for, you can give all your choices to.
I'm sorry, I think Elaine missed Rubin's, Rubin's score on that.
No, she got it.
Yeah, it would be three plus two points.
Okay, sorry.
Three, two, one.
Because she didn't add the, I think there's supposed to be another.
It's all there, Gina.
Okay, so what have we got as the, as our winners here?
Fifty-one is nine.
Good. Maybe what we should do is give Elaine a chance while we talk about the next ones, to get them all totaled and up here. And then before we vote, she can announce the winners. What do you think, Elaine?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're gonna look now, if you've moved this, Eduardo, to SI five, let's look at the next ones. And before we vote on the next ones, we'll come back to this and announce the, the top ones. Okay, so you all have looked at this, and I'm sure you all have thought already about this. So let's pitch it. You can pitch your favorite or your top two, but give it your all. Anders, you're up.
Okay, all right. So there are several things that I think it's extremely important here. And I think the first thing is, we mean, we spent the last year talking about how important it is for us to revitalize our downtown. And, you know, we spent a lot of time, and we, in fact, made it a priority for us to redo our specific plan for downtown. So I think, you know, the enhancing the parking authority and the parking strategy citywide would certainly play into that, and how important this, this become a part of the solution to revitalize our downtown. So I think that would be my number one priority. And also, being able to have a downtown business association, you know, be able to advocate for our downtown businesses and how to improve our downtown, I think that goes hand in hand as well. And how, if we're serious about making some stride to seeing the changes that we envisioned, those two things would certainly be a top priority. You know, and then also the great separation opportunity at Murchison, given how Alexandria has come in and bringing in thousands of, you know, high-paying jobs. We want to be able to find ways to bring these people back to the west side to help with the economic development. And, you know, there, there, all these daytime traffic, we need to be able to capture the opportunities here. So I think, you know, and that is gonna take some collaboration, work with our neighboring city Birmingham, because Murchison is sort of the dividing line between our two cities. And I think there's an opportunity for us to work together there to get some grant funding to see this project through. So those are my top priorities.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Anne, how about you?
Well, they're not necessarily what I would like to do, but it is what I think is doable. Number sixty-two, the ballot measure for transit-oriented tax increase. I think we're at twelve percent. Most of the other cities are at fourteen percent, and at least one or two other cities are working on increases of their TOTs. Usually, they, they do well because it's not costing our residents, or, well, it costs our businesses, but it's passed through to their customers on that, and I don't think it's gonna make our hotels any less competitive. Number two, as a liaison to community art, the reason I keep advocating for a public art and a climate change fee is we have talked about it for my six years on council. It had to have a NEXUS study done. The NEXUS study is there. Both the climate resiliency fee, fee will help us do the work we have to do to keep people, to, to help us, to help protect our people and our businesses from climate-created emergencies. And public art is a way that's gonna bring people in. Public art isn't just art for its sake. Art can be a driver to come into a region to see the art. I go to communities just to see their public art. Maybe that's just me, but both of these, the NEXUS study is done, we simply have to do the finished work and bring it up to council in the fee schedule. And it's been set aside. It's one of the reasons why we don't have public art actually in the Alexandria project, which we really should have had, like we did through the developer agreement with the Gateway and Sarah Station projects. And my number three is the development of at least one of our peripheral parking lots. The one that I would choose would either be the lot next to seven-eleven and/or the lot that is behind the buildings on Park. And both of those are, well, they're not making us any money. They don't look very good, and they could become a mixed-use, greater retail space, some housing in it. But if we could experiment with one of our smaller lots before we deal with, say, the big lot, the Magnolia parking lot, those would be my three choices.
Great. Thank you. Annie, how about you?
Well, can I just ask a question for definition on fifty-nine? What does that mean exactly?
It, to me, I think I was the one that wrote that, Mayor. It means that we've got the parking lot at Park and Park, Magnolia parking lot, the seven-eleven parking lot. We had the parking lot at MSASP, but that's off the table now because work's gone ahead. But we have these ones that if we look at the work that we did in the design charrette for the bit, the general plan in twenty sixteen.
The city parking lots?
The city, the city parking lots, yeah, to get some value out of our city parking lots and create some parking that we need. So at least in those design charrette, they talked about mixed-use project, retail ground floor, parking inside, housing on top.
So we would, we would keep the land and develop the parking lot?
Well, that's for us to decide, but talking about this, doing something that keeping them there is basically free parking is what they are right now.
So just a question, when that, that, that kind of idea, which I like the idea, but does it have to go out for best, best and high issues?
That's a decision that I think council has to decide. That's, I think it's a great discussion, Mayor, and why.
I, I love it. Thank you. But I, I'm not sure that we, we have the authority to do it. That's my.
Well, and, and I think that's exactly what sixty-eight is for, is to enhance that parking authority.
Okay, good.
So that we, so that we can re-envision the parking strategy citywide, and that would play into how we, you know, develop these peripheral parking structures.
Okay, so fifty, yeah, so that's what I was thinking. Fifty-nine was really the same as sixty-eight in, in essence.
Sixty-eight is sort of the high-level thinking of it, but yes, it, it essentially implements, you know, fifty-nine.
Okay.
And just real quick, sorry, real quick for the record, if the parking authority's expanded to include, you know, downtown, the parking authority has the authority then to develop parking, public parking garages without having to go through the surplus land act and.
Right. Okay, so that's, that's, so we, to eliminate, we would eliminate that process of fifty-nine if we went right to sixty-eight.
I'm okay with that, since I, I think I put fifty-nine in unless somebody else had the same thinking.
No, but.
Just to make it clear to the public, the city council is the parking authority. But yeah, it would go through a different venue. You're right.
Perfect. Okay, so thank you for the clarification. I would be all in favor of that. And the downtown business association, I would love to see something of that advocating to enhance that. And I, all in favor of the BID reiterating it. We were just on such a great roll that we had to drop it with, that was, you know, a tragedy of COVID. So those would be my three.
Great. Thank you, Annie. Gina?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out, you've got development impact fees for art and climate resiliency. I thought we had one in there for childcare, because that is a completely. Because that is a completely fiscal sustainability, economic development. But I guess it got lost up here in another strategy.
It was, it was in strategic initiative one, fees for public art and childcare.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do anything with fees, I would like to reiterate that how important that is to our community. So I, you know, we get to, some of the things we talked about, we were going to move down and, you know, impact them here. And I think it really got lost in the last session there. I do think that's, if you're talking about fees, we need to keep them all together here. So I would, you know, inquire to my colleagues if they feel that that's important as well, or this is just me. I see council member Schneider.
It's okay with me. I'd, I'd, I add that Gina. I think that's a great point.
I think we need to release one more too. None of the other council members.
Now, just so you all know, and that is in SI one. And it received, fee, number seventeen, fees for public art and childcare received zero votes last time.
I'm aware of that.
And so do you want to move it to SI five and give it another chance?
I would like to. I think it's.
All right, I, I'm just.
I don't think it really fits with SI five.
It's not fiscal sustainability or economic development.
Yeah, maybe SI three.
Advocate for a moment. Since that's what we're doing here. We are, our fiscal sustainability depends on our getting certain fees moving forward here. I think that is a critical part of what Millbrae should be moving forward here. The only way we can get childcare facilities or support childcare facilities moving forward is if we have a fee associated with that. So I do think it impacts our sustainability and economic development. How did I sell it? Did anybody agree?
Gina, can, can I help you?
She needs help.
No, 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 it just one of, one of the, one of the number one findings out of COVID and what is keeping a lot of women and some men from re-entering the workforce is the lack of childcare. It's perceived as one of the top issues for our area is affordable, safe healthcare. So if we can fit it in with the fees, I, I think that's fine and encourage any mixed use programs to also have onsite childcare.
I don't think it fits with SI five.
No.
This is about kind of building the city budget, economic development.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify here.
I think that's more about quality of life.
Let's table this for the moment and, and make sure.
Well, still up to discuss here, so this is my turn. So I'm gonna give you one last shot here. If my colleagues can't see the fact that you can't get childcare fees in the door so that we can enhance childcare throughout our city, then there's zero opportunity of pursuing that in the future. So I think this is a critical point. I do think it relates to our fiscal sustainability and economic development. So I will move on, but I do think, I can't, I'm having a hard time comprehending how my colleagues can't see that. I mean, it's almost like collecting an affordable housing fee. Then you move that to where it could be used.
Gina, we could encourage preschool owners to open up businesses.
At a mayor. These businesses, as you're referring to, are struggling. If we have a fee, then we can help them with their success.
Okay, and I, I don't, I don't dispute your argument, but we, we already discussed it on SI two or three or one. So this doesn't fit here for the discussion.
Well, you have a fee there for public art and climate resiliency.
Yeah, and I'm, and I, I've, so, so what's your argument for that? What, what is your, what is your rally for that?
For public art and climate resiliency?
Yeah.
I have a hard time understanding the climate resiliency part. I understand.
Well, the, the original was, if I can interrupt for just one second. Fees for public art and childcare, which were on SI one, which you all did not vote for. We can, we can put it on the list to revisit after we vote on the existing SI five. What do you think of that? And then we'll come back when we go through all six. We'll come back and, and see if everyone wants to add it as something to vote on just generally.
I think that's a great compromise.
Okay, so other than that one Gina, you're going to vote on three of these in the SI five. So would you, would you pitch which other things you're interested in?
I am interested in sixty-eight, enhancing the parking authority and strategy.
Okay.
And the TOT tax ballot measure.
Okay, great. Any reason we should all vote, vote for that? This is your sales pitch.
Well, yeah, at this point in time, it does not really impact our residents. Yet I think it would make us more competitive with the surrounding jurisdictions who have already increased their transit oriented development tax. This is something that has to go to the voters. I think the voters would be open to at least matching our surrounding jurisdictions. So I do feel that it is important moving forward here. And I'm gonna refrain from any of the other ones at this point.
Okay, Ruben, last but not least. Pitch some of your, pitch some of your favorites.
It's a very hard choice to pick from these. I think sixty-two is important. First of all, just to make sure people know what we're talking about. It's not transit oriented tax. It's transient occupancy tax, hotel tax. Very different thing. Something else that I think is maybe, you know, not quite as big, but I, I think it's fairly urgent is number sixty-six. Public and political support for Target at the Office Depot site. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a target, but some type of enhanced commercial you know, usage at that site more so than what has been proposed by the developer. And I don't know how much leverage we really have, but now would be the time to do that, if we have any leverage at all. Basically one, one opportunity there.
Great, thank you. Alright, are you all ready to vote? Once again, if you would say, as I call on you, your number one vote, which is three points and, and give the number and also the descriptive. In other words, if it's fifty-eight, please say fifty-eight reintroduced business improvement district. So that it's easy, it's, we're trying to make it as easy for Elaine to, and other people that are watching this to identify. So we're still in five. Okay, Anders, what is your vote for number one?
So first of all, before I vote, I think there are certain things on here that I think it's important to do, although it may not necessarily become sort of a strategic goal, you know, it's more like, you know, a work item, you know, like, you know, re-engaging the Moxie and the Anton Hotel Plan. The Moxie's already been approved. You've just gotta go back to these guys and say, hey, look, you know, let's get started on it. So I, I, I think we need to do it, you know, but I don't think it, you know, it fits into the category of a strategic goal. But it doesn't change the fact that that's, it's an item that I think is important for us to do. And same thing, you know, for sixty-six, for example, advocating for some sort of a big box retailer to bring in, you know, the economic benefit at somebody's mixed use development, although it doesn't fit into a sort of, sort of a strategic goal that we need to spend a year to do, but it is a conversation that we need to get started on. So I would agree with those two. I think the enhancing the parking authority and the parking strategy citywide would certainly be a top of my choice here. Because it really is an important piece of the puzzle to enhancing our downtown and, and seeing the, to the changes that we envision our downtown to be. And sixty-nine would be important as well because that could also play into fifty-eight, you know, how sixty-nine, the downtown business association could help see to it to reintroduce that business improvement district. So it, it, it has multiple advocating effect that will help somebody other initiative. So sixty-eight and then sixty-nine. I would agree, you know, after listening to everyone that the transient occupancy tax increase could, you know, be beneficial to us. So I would give that a third vote.
Okay, let's make sure we've got, you talked about several and I'm not sure, what is, what's the number of your first choice, your three, three pointer?
I, I talk about the importance of, you know, sixty-five and sixty-six, you know, although my vote will go to sixty-eight.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Okay.
Sixty-nine.
Good.
And then sixty-two.
Alright, you got that Elaine?
Yes, I.
Great.
Kathy, we have it. Yep.
Got it. Okay, good. Alright, thank you so much, Ann. Under, you know, there's so much, it's, I'm so impressed with all these goals and, and you all work so hard and it's all fabulous. If only they could all be done. But probably not this year. You probably can't get them all this year. So, Ann, what do you vote? Where are your three?
Okay, just to help people understand what a climate resiliency fee would be. And this is somewhat new, but other cities have them. So based, you know, just like they're putting in a housing in Luthy. It's a tiny fee, but it would give the city money to extend the purple recycled water pipe to plant trees. If a project is cutting down trees and they're not, they don't have a place to plant trees, they would plant trees in other parts of the city. It basically takes things that make us more resilient to heat, flood, water, whatever. But it gives the city a pot of money to do that. That's what the climate resiliency fee is. So with that and being, and listening to what other people said, and, and I agree with them. Ruben, I'm sorry, I thought Target couldn't come in because it didn't have enough square footage. But maybe if they came in without the supermarket, we could get them. I have been advocating, so I'm with you on that. But sixty, sixty and sixty-two.
Just to interrupt, it's, it's not so much about, you know, the square, whether or not Target can, there's no square footage for Target. It's how do we make it happen? Whether that's boosting the square footage or that's how I interpreted it more so than.
Okay.
Target, you have to go get there.
Alright, Ann, let's just go back. Your first, you, you.
I would love, the people of Millbrae would love Target there. Sixty, development fees for public art and climate resiliency. And to give the city pots of money to be able to spend on these projects. One of which is life saving. So sixty, sixty and sixty-two.
Alright, so you're giving five of your points to sixty.
That is correct.
And your last point to sixty-two.
And if I had to, I'd change that to sixty-two. I would give all of my points to sixty.
Okay, but, but for now, we're doing five points to sixty, one point to sixty-two. Yes?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. Annie?
Okay, so let me make this clear. Sixty-nine Downtown Business Association for Downtown Business Improvement is the same as re-induced, re, it's not the same. It's, it's reintroducing the business improvement district while making a business association. Is that correct?
I, I would envision the, I would envision the Downtown Business Association would be, you know, be advocating to improve the business in downtown and also the business improvement and establishing the.
So fifty-eight is eliminated.
It would be part of the work of the Downtown Business Association, yeah.
Okay, so I will say, I hope nobody votes for sixty, fifty-eight because it's already, it's in sixty-nine. I will say sixty-eight, sixty-nine and sixty-two.
Okay, three points to enhance parking authority, two points for Downtown Business Association and one point to ballot measure. Yes?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Gina?
Um, let me see here. Where's my point scores go? I will first off agree with Ruben here in that we're just limiting ourselves on sixty-six. That we should be focused on a qualify, you know, as, how do I say this? A inappropriate retail in the office depot. Not just settling for something here. Yes, we all agree Target would be good. But that might not be what we can do. We are all trying to make that happen. But something of a high quality, I think is important there. So, you know, it's just the way that this is written. Similarly, again, with sixty, we are limiting ourselves in such a way. But at this point, I'll go with three points for ballot measure sixty-two. Two points for number sixty-eight. Parking authority. And I'm gonna hold my one point because I'm still, can't believe you guys didn't do childcare.
It's coming back.
Is sandbag allowed? Can we, could we keep our points and move them to the next one?
Let's, let's do this one and then you'll get to vote again. And if you have a problem with that, once we get there, we can look at your points and if you want to remove them from somewhere else, we'll figure out how to do it.
Gina, we, we will revisit the childcare. We said it. We will revisit it the next time we meet on this.
Well, it may be tonight. We may get. Alright, so what is your third? Where are you going to give your one point on this SI five Gina?
I'm, I'm not giving it. I'm just holding it. I, I, I understand. I mean, we'll need a tiebreaker or something.
Alright, okay, great. Okay, Ruben, your turn.
Okay, I'm gonna go sixty-two, sixty-six and sixty-nine.
So your three points go to the ballot measure for transient occupancy. Your two points go to, what was it?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, public and political support for Target or another big retailer. And your one point goes to sixty-nine Downtown Business Association.
Correct.
Great. Bravo.
Kathy, point of order.
Yeah.
If we were doing a motion, the maker of the motion would be entitled to doing a friendly amendment. I hear what Vice Mayor Papin is saying that if we're opening up impact fees, let's open up impact fees for all things that could fit under it, which would include childcare. So as the maker of that Gina, I am happy to make sixty, sixty and advocate for childcare in there. And, and anything else that we may have forgotten that staff might know that has the nexus study to support it. Or we have to pay a little bit more for our own nexus study if it isn't in there. I, I haven't looked at the nexus study since last spring.
Do, do any of you disagree with adding childcare, childcare to the development impact fees that are number sixty?
I don't want to, yes, I disagree. I do not want to add it. I don't mind to revisit it. And I don't mind to take specific fees out if they want to have development fees addressed or, you know,
Yeah.
Looked at.
These are all your words.
Yeah.
You guys have written this. And so I think for this purpose right now, we should keep it as it is and then we'll revisit when we get there. Okay? How are we doing? Did you get all the numbers Elaine?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to go back to, do you want to go back to SI four and announce the winners or should we wait till we're done?
Kathy, I'd recommend moving on to SI six.
Let's go move the slides forward, please Eduardo. Great, okay. Exciting. And I must pitch this again. I mentioned it briefly last time we met and because you are looking at becoming a sustainable city, many cities and counties and states are looking at long-term sustainability for environmental stewardship. You can't fix it or do something in one year and it's, and a lot of people are thinking now about the ten-year plan, the five-year plan and so forth. So you all might consider having a meeting just on this, but we're going to go ahead and vote for what we're going to do in twenty-two, twenty-three tonight. But I do recommend that the council consider it. Alright, who would like to start? I think it's Anders. What would you like to pitch on this one?
Okay, now I think I'm going to go back and tell my father why he named me with an Anders. So.
That's right, you're under pressure.
First thing. That's okay. The first thing here, you know, I could be advocating for number eighty here, the building co-amendment for dual plumbing to use recycled water. You know, for toilet flushing and other things, you know, in major developments because, you know, we agreed. Um, you know, for toilet flushing and other things, you know, in major developments, because, you know, we agreed on SI two previously. That we're going to prioritize, uh, the use of recycling water. And to recycle water and improvement, because water is a valuable resource, um, and, you know, we. Already knew how valuable this natural resources is. How important it is to housing, how important it is to all of us as a region, um, so we need to do everything we can here. To preserve and conserve the use of drinking water. And so, you know, continue to use drinking portable water to flush down our toilet, it's just, uh. Is, I cannot accept that, so, and I think it's not a difficult thing to do, because all we gotta do is to, just to be a leader. And, and amend our building code to require major mixed-use type development, yes, we have a lot of them coming into our city. Uh, so that they can, you know, put into dual plumbing and, and become sort of a, a client and user. For these reclaimed recycle water, so I think that would certainly be, uh, an important part to seeing. Uh, protecting the environment and be able to conserve these valuable natural resources. Um, so that would be my top choice.
You're just pitching.
And I understand, but I, I wanna emphasize how important it is, and it's not even, it doesn't really have much of a revenue. I mean, in fact, it has a revenue impact, because if we would be able to produce these, uh, treasury water. These reclaimed water, uh, these could potentially be a major client and we can actually get economic benefit from that as well. So also, um, achieving that zero in common area electrical use such a new development, it's, it's really a way for us to. To commit to, um, renewable energy, uh, to make sure that. You know, and all we have to do is, you know, amend our building code, and we already have some of that along the way. So, um, to make sure that new development coming in would be able to achieve net zero in common area electrical usage via. Uh, either solar panel or other means, so I think those are, uh, those are easy things we can do. And, uh, and it also play into number seventy-one as well, earlier in, in, in the same chart. And how we explore onsite water recycling program and new development, um, that could also work into number eighty, so. Um, I think those are my, my top pitch.
A lot of good things on this list, um, Anne.
Um, this list seems bigger than when we looked at it two weeks ago, I would have. The problem of us doing it in this way is that we cannot say that three of these are basically saying the same thing. And then there's the, the problem of can the city change its building code? When we follow the state's universal building code, and that's for staff to give us information. Otherwise, I, I look at all of this and said, if we could combine the ones that require ordinance changes into. A package of green infrastructure ordinances and work on them collectively, they would fit. Um, part of the problem, I, I, I agree with what Anders said. Using recycled water in our buildings is that, but until we get the pipe and that system, that's years down the line, however. Our new buildings at the Gateway Project are doing bio-retention, they are retaining, uh, stormwater for onsite reuse. So we've already got some of that built into at least the MSASP on that. So I, I, Kathy, I love your idea that we actually dive into that, but again, this is what I do for a living, so I, I love this stuff. I would say, and for my council members to understand why I made a very complicated number seventy-eight. On our east side are our neighborhoods that have the greatest chance of flooding. They're the neighborhoods that have the worst of the noise from the airport and the worst of the air pollution. In addition, that east side along Lamita Canal has been added to one shoreline to look at. Um, potential sea level rise issues as it works with stormwater. If we can get our ducks in a row, we can get the Bay Trail where it belongs. On the, um, access, the dirt access road that runs along the Lamita Canal, we can make sure that what one shoreline does enhances. The, the neighborhoods down there, but all of us, it'll provide additional recreation, it'll be better for the endangered species. And if you, I know that the mayor has walked down there, I think the vice mayor has also walked down behind where we keep flooding. Where SFO has allowed flooding year after year. What has happened in other areas? They have taken mitigation funds, PG&E did work in Millbrae. And they paid Pescadero to enhance their red-legged frog and garter snake habitat. They did that by creating bigger ponds and more islands, the snake can go up when it's raining and the frogs are happy no matter what. And the two are predator prey species. If we could get that pond in our east side, if it's in our plan now. And one shoreline is working on this now, we can get that water from flooding landing lane. Put it out there, have better endangered species and stop our homes from flooding, so this is. In the environmental world, we've been siloing ourselves, this is putting everything into one pot right there. And it is a unique opportunity, because not just one shoreline, SFO is going through their next expansion. And as the city manager keeps telling me, and this is our opportunity to ask for mitigation when they finish their, their, uh. Environmental impact report this year, but we have to get our ducks in a row, so that's why I'm advocating for seventy-eight. I love everything else on here, the other one that I put on here, when I was a staffer at San Jose. Each year, every environmental specialty, and again, big staff, I had seven people working for me just for garbage. Uh, we set our goals, we had to know what money we were gonna spend, what we thought we were gonna achieve. And we had to report at the end of the year whether we achieved it, and that's how you set hard environmental goals and you make sure that they happen. So I'm an advocate for seventy-four and, uh, seventy-eight. And really what I want to do, if they're gonna dig up my street for an issue tonight on the agenda. Is all of our median strips could become bioswales, we need to start doing the green infrastructure now, not five years from now. I don't have to remind everybody what happened on December twenty-third, we need to be doing climate resiliency action now.
Thank you, you're a good, a good pitcher, I like it, Annie, how about you?
Hmm, a good pitcher, but I'm not so sure I'm a good catcher, because I don't really understand a lot of seventy-eight and I want to. Um, I wanna know that if that resilience conceptual drawing, uh, is that something that's. Uh, we would hire somebody out to do? And then, then we would make goals from that conceptual drawing to, um. To what we can do, and I mean, everything's gonna cost money, of course. Is.
I, I left out the best part, Mayor, if I can interrupt, if we can get this done, we can create something called a habitat conservation plan. With that, we can monetize the wetland area, let's say. Let's say Alexandria wants to grow another building and they, we, they don't want to do any environmental stuff. They pay us to enhance that area, so we have actually monetized our open space. And, um, again, this is what Pescadero did, they monetized their open space. So yes, Mayor, you're, you're right, we would conceptualize it, there is a professor at Stanford who is very interested in coming up here with his post. Graduate students and helping us, because we are really unique in how many regional agencies. Control much of Millbrae, whether it's SFPUC up in the hills, which means drainage watershed. All the way down to SFPUC land and SFO land and PG&E and, and all the transportation agencies, it's really. Incredible, if we just, uh, we can bring the professor on, but, um, and let the, the post-grad students. These are professionals really, um, help us come up with a plan that we can monetize.
So, I, I'm not gonna lobby for any of these, because they're all fantastic, I would lobby for all of them, that seems to have the biggest bang for our buck here, seventy-eight. Um, the only two that I would, uh, I guess lobby against, when, when I see the word a hundred percent compliance with organic and single-use packaging laws. Under percent compliance, um, usually means, uh, you're going to hurt somebody that's not a hundred percent immediate. And the other thing that I get nervous looking at is, um. Remove hardscapes, starting illegal ones in Parkway Strip conversion to bioswales, I don't mind, like you, you mentioned Councilwoman Schneider. As we do repairs and we, we, we replace, of course, replacing to make better is always good, but, you know. I, I would remove and a hundred percent compliance don't fit into my plans usually, I like to ease out.
I hear, you, you know, the one with the illegal ones though, according to current code. The city can't do anything about them until they come for a permit, so for example, somebody concretes in their entire front yard. Um, just up the hill from the Hillcrest underpass, we can't do anything about it. I look at it as a carrot in a city, if the city offers to pay for the disposal of concrete. If the resident agrees to put in. A tree, then we have a win-win, so not a punitive way, a, a more partnership way, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, eighty and eighty and, uh, eighty-one are, I think they're in the works. I think we're there, pretty much, we're, we're, we're seeing our, our. Our new developments using, you know, building codes that we have not, uh, seen in the past. And like, so, somebody had mentioned that state mandated and we're following whatever the state is saying and they're. They're encouraging all of the local jurisdictions to. Be pretty net zero on electrical and the dual plumbing for recycled water, I, they're all good.
Sure, this is a bigger discussion as.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think if I was gonna lobby, I would take care of our own first, I would go for the east side, I would go with seventy-eight. I think, you know, we should take care of our people first.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor and Gina?
Uh, yeah, I don't know what happened here, I made a whole bunch of comments and I thought they got to staff, but, um, I guess they did not. Uh, so. You know, I think we've got a whole bunch of different things under seventy-eight, we've got a whole bunch and, and, and people are kind of. Unclear, and that's what I tried to communicate with comments, which didn't get to staff, obviously. As to what some of these things actually mean, I agree with the mayor that a lot of these things are extremely important. But we are operating from a lack of understanding and. Not in a position at this point in time to get a full-blown lecture on all of these. Uh, they are important, no doubt about it. So, I mean, I would definitely, the governor and the state has already passed laws about. Electric vehicles, uh, coming by, I don't know what year, but they are coming. And I would love to see us on number seventy-seven. Take advantage of, and we have a new electric car company here in Millbrae. There's no reason we should be waiting, um, not to take the lead on some of this and we do need to come up. To the level of supercharging instead of these little two-second thing, you know. Come on, people, let's up our game here, um, so I would say seventy-seven is important. We need to do that, uh, again, I, I'll agree with the mayor on seventy-six. Hundred percent compliance, I mean, we passed an ordinance recently. About, um, supporting legislation which should be on the ballot that would cover. Number seventy-six, so I don't think we need to make that a priority, we've already spoken on that, and, um. Again, hard to tell here, yes, I think we were cracking down on the hardscapes and we still need to do that. Um, I'll agree with seventy-one exploring onsite water recycling programs at new developments. Didn't that fit into something else? Where's the other water thing that Anders was talking about?
Eighty.
Eighty, um, yeah, I guess that is. Aren't eighty and seventy-one kind of the same?
So, eight, so let me articulate that a little bit Gina, so, um, the. First of all, I think the building co-amendment is something we can do locally, unless the city attorney tell me otherwise. I don't believe the state has made any stride in amending this building code, you know, from a California building code standpoint or a California plumbing code. For, you know, from that standpoint, to, um, ask for dual plumbing and major development, but I think we can take the leadership role in that. And, and also at the same time, if we're serious about, you know, reci, you know. Finding ways to do reclaim water and recycle water, we gotta keep, other than recycling these water, we gotta give it a user. Right, and the perfect usage of that would be landscaping, like for example, the Green Hill Country Club, for example, use it for landscaping irrigation. And the second biggest user, uh, would be for the dual plumbing to use it. Recycle water and for toilet flushing and these major mixed-use type development, which we know we have a lot of them coming into our city. So, and, and if we were to be able to do that, uh, that could also be an opportunity for us as well, so. Being able to explore onsite water recycling, uh, combined with reclaimed water, these all. Combined with, uh, they're all sort of this gray water recycling strategy, uh, and give it. You know, a strategy to use it appropriately here, uh, and that could also be a big benefit to. Um, making strides in, in, in water conservation.
Yeah, I think we were all, I think there's stuff going on with Green Hill, so I've got like seventy-one. Seventy-nine and eighty all fall in the water category there, and then part of. My comment as far as eighty-seven was there were too many things under one, so it was just. You know, that wasn't one issue, that's about five different issues there, so. Again, I agree with the mayor here, this is probably something we need to take completely separately. Because we all need some sort of additional education here, I did speak up about the. Supercharging and access to charging for electric vehicles, so I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you very much Gina, and this is a non-sequitur, but I just will mention it in case you guys need help. I have an association with the San Francisco, um, based Presidio Graduate School that gives an MBA and an MPA. In Sustainable Management, and they may have students who would be interested also if the San Jose group doesn't pan out. Pardon me?
Stanford.
No, I'm talking, oh, I'm sorry, Stanford, so if, if Stanford doesn't pan out, then, uh, these guys might also, they've been around for over twenty years and they're. Well-established, so they may also be, have interns or someone that would like to do a class project related to this, okay, Ruben?
Okay, um, I think in our previous, um, session, we had a goal for, um. Recycled water plan and improvements, so I, oh, perhaps it's just item seventy-one. And, um, eighty could perhaps be part of that, uh, plan, that master plan. Um, in terms of this list, uh, something that I think is very important is number seventy-two, encouraging building electrification. Something that I know a number of cities are looking at doing, um, we did approve breach codes a couple of years ago, which prohibit new. Natural gas, um, installations and, and new construction. Uh, which I think is a very positive step, but, but it really doesn't do anything to eliminate, um. Natural gas use that is already happening in buildings that already exist. Um, which I think is a very major part of, um, our climate emissions and. In order to reach, uh, the goals, um, set out in our climate action plan, one of the biggest, um. Factors would be to reduce, uh, natural gas usage in buildings. Um, I know since cities like San Antonio and half of them, they are discussing ways to phase it out entirely. At some timeline, twenty forty, twenty fifty, something around there, um, so I'd like to see maybe we could work with municipal clean energy. Uh, look at some of what these other cities are doing to, um, maybe provide rebates or do some type of. Uh, program to encourage, um, homeowners or, uh, building owners to. Electrify the buildings and move, uh, natural gas.
All right, thank you so much Ruben, time is fleeting, you all, we need to vote on this.
Can we just add one clarification before we vote on it? Could we ask our city manager if. If Gina's, uh, items got, were not got, not, did not get to staff?
Uh, thank you, yeah, we did, we did receive her comments, um, and I can address those. Uh, if you'd like me to do it now or after you vote on these, because it kind of crosses over all six strategic initiatives. Uh, there were some questions, for example, well, one was fix the acronym, so we did that. Uh, we even fixed the, fixed acronyms to ensure TOT is transit occupancy tax. Um, she had a question about what is the density bonus, um, goal and how does that work locally? Um, I believe that was, uh, Councilmember Fung's, um, goal, so we'd be prepared. At, at the pleasure of the council to do a deep dive and address that, childcare fees, we've already discussed. Uh, the Airport Land Use Plan, um, she made a comment about can we. Uh, when the Airport Land Use Plan is amended, can we, uh, include childcare and SFO? I think we can. Um, I have a note of that and I think that's more of a task, um, that, that we will, you know, we, we will implement. The expansion of life moves, uh, the success of that program, um, should we, as we expand that. uh, hold Bart accountable? Um, yeah, I, I, I do believe that we should and as that program evolves, um, you know, that's already something that we're working on, a work in progress. Um, also the litter ordinance, I know Gina has mentioned this on several occasions. I have talked to the chief uh, in the sheriff's office about just doing a blitz, uh, in the downtown area, uh, to enforce our litter ordinance. It's already on the books. And I believe that.
I think, I thought she meant on this, um, S I six. Gina, are you there?
Yeah, I, I did think part of my comments were, you know, breaking up seventy-eight and you know, putting these pieces together more so, but I mean, time is of the essence here. I do think we need, we're gonna need a whole um, environmental, uh, meeting probably on some of this stuff. Uh, so, I mean, there, there were comments I did not get the answers to before the meeting, um, so, just let's keep going.
All right, let's, we'll vote on it then.
Okay. All right, Anders, for second and third, please.
Um, so I think, uh, you know, I think it's already spoke about in many of this, um, item here, so I would go to eighty, um, and then second and third, go for eighty-one.
Second and third for eighty-one, so three points to eighty and you're giving three points to eighty-one. Is that correct? Okay, Elaine, you got that? Anne.
Um, I'm gonna go all three to seventy-eight. The reason is you cannot silo these. Each one fits into itself. Yes, does it need further discussion? Absolutely. So all three to east side. An east side, um, environmental resiliency plan with a resiliency conceptual drawing.
Great, so six points to seventy-eight and Annie?
I'll go seventy-eight, eighty and eighty-one in that order.
Great, thank you. Gina?
I'm gonna go six points on seventy-seven, cause it's the only one I can really totally understand at this point. Um, and I do believe that the Endangered Species Act involves the feds. So I'm, I'm having a little, again, I think we should really open this up for future discussion, but at this point, I'm gonna go six points on seventy-seven.
Okay. And Ruben?
So if that's the direction that other council members are going, I'm gonna go, uh, six points on seventy-two. I thought that was the goal of the, the exercise.
Yeah, Ruben, Ruben, if I can help you right now, P C E has three rebate programs. One for cooktops, one for furnaces and one for, uh, water tanks. So, um, but I have, I'm trying to put in a a new water tank and, and it's really complicated. So there is some work to be done there and they're expensive. All three are very expensive.
Elaine, did you get all this? Yes, is that a yes? Okay, so if we're to, let's move back to S I four. Time is fleeting and let's see who the winners are.
Um, I actually have it on slide sixteen.
Okay, great, let's look on slide sixteen. Okay, so the first, we have nine votes on staff development and training, seven improve website, five and, uh, create a grant team and four multilingual staffing, five update city ordinances, five B, uh, with the same number of votes, separate bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission. So on S I five, eight votes to the ballot measure for transit-oriented tax increases. Eight votes for enhanced parking authority, et cetera. Five votes for develop impact fees for public art and climate resiliency, and we'll stop later about what else that could include. And five votes for downtown public, I mean, business association. And, and two votes for public and political support for a target or something like that. The sixth one, uh, we're working on right now, but it looks like the top one is nine votes for east side water retention. And six votes for encourage building electrification, six votes for electrical vehicle supercharger, and I can't read the next one, cause the line is covering it, building, I can't see it.
Building code amendment for dual plumbing.
Okay, great, so this gives us five, ten, fourteen from the first three and six twenty-five and five thirty. Now, we need to get a little realistic here. Um, I don't know how, do you all have, you have, do you have in front of you the pieces of paper? Or do you just have, no?
Hey Kathy?
Yeah.
Sorry to run, ruin your chain of thought here, but just to bring, so we only have ten minutes and I know that we need to go back through all of these and now take these to, you know, the final priority.
Right, right.
Citywide. In the meantime, I think, uh, council member Papin had asked if we could, uh, go back to the development impact fee question, so maybe we have time to discuss that and see where majority of the council wants to go. And then we can continue this study session to the next meeting and then we can hone in on S I one through six and get the top priorities across the board, if that, if the council.
Through the chair, um, I think what we did for S I one, two and three last time was eliminate those that were on the lower end, so perhaps those for a first step, we could eliminate those with, with two votes, um, items four and five.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Ruben, but I think what, uh, city manager is asking right now is if we could talk about impact fees, so we can have that conversation before we take each one of these individually, if that's okay? So.
And so the final decision will not be made until your next meeting.
Correct. We're gonna put you to work one more time.
I mean, I, I get the point that it was discarded in an upper one, but now it just moved down, it reappeared in this one, but childcare was dropped, so I do think that's vital to our city as a whole here. If we're going to do all the fees, we need to do them all at once. And they are key to really our sustainability as a city and whether this city council wants to emphasize families and children. And, you know, the overall cost of childcare is outrageous. So a fee like this would help support childcare facilities within our community and also encourage developers to put them within their, um, developments.
So, yeah, and on the subject of impact fees, though, I, I know that we visited our impact fees and revised them not too long ago. Is that, it's, it hasn't, it was right after the T O D project, if I remember correctly.
We actually redid them last June, July to make sure that they were in line when we were dealing also, that's also why Anton became what Anton did, but we, we updated a few June last year, July last year, but it was very housing-specific. And I, I, at the time I said, and I was mayor at the time, said, can't we look at the climate resiliency or climate change component and the art component? And the art component, I was told, we had to have an art plan to do an art component within the nexus study, so, uh, cultural arts is working on the art plan in our goals that we approve for them, and climate change doesn't have that same ru-, set of rules in it. And I just, Tom, do we have to have a nexus study for childcare?
We do, yeah, when it comes to development impact fees, you have to, the, the law requires that we have a nexus study. So we link, we link the improvements with the amount of the fee.
But the, the other advantage of having, doing what Gina is suggesting is showing that we really understand this problem, is it's a good business attraction too. Companies will want to move here if they know that we support childcare for their employees.
I think the county also has an extreme amount of data. I don't know if we're allowed to rely on the county's data as it relates to childcare, but there's a whole, I think we even got a briefing about childcare and the needs within our communities on that.
We did, but it's city by city, if I remember correctly, so that's probably something that's.
City of Millbrae needs to wake up then and be a part of this. It's like, you know, if we put this in as a goal, then at least we're committed to looking at it and trying to put the pieces together here. Uh, so if we are talking about fees, I think that in and of itself is the most compassionate and you know, related to people who want to live here or work here, and I think it's just vital. So if we're talking about fees, I think they should all be put together.
Well, we are talking about, we were talking about tax there, tax and fees, the measure ballot.
I have no problem with the T O T.
No, I know, but I'm just trying to see where the, where this impact fees, because I, I, I definitely would not lobby for fees of everything. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do impact fees for public art, climate resilience and child development. Nothing against any of the three, it's just that I don't wanna look at.
Well, I think it relates only to new developments that come in here.
Well, we, we, we need to review our, our, our develop, our impact fees again, which we just did.
What we need to do again, cause we left some out. I mean, let's be realistic here.
I'm, I'm just stating the obvious.
Right, I get it. I concede, we just did them. I concede, and I hope you would concede, that they weren't all encompassing and they need to be. We need to be grownups about this, other cities have these.
I guess my problem is, is that nobody voted for it in S I one. And now, we're going, can we look at S I one where we could, where we were at, is, somewhere it could fit there?
Look, I think it relates specifically to sustainability, that's why I let it go in S I one. This is part of our economic development and sustainability.
I, I'm not so sure you're, I, I'm not sure I agree on that. Define Millbrae's community of tomorrow would be S I, that would be S I one, and that's where I could see the childcare fees.
Uh, but that's not, why would you, I, you would believe.
Basically, you're talking about infrastructure, whether.
I'm talking about fiscal sustainability and economic development. I think it belongs more so here than anywhere. You've got huge developments coming in, the Alexandria one, they're gonna come in, they're not gonna contribute anything to childcare within our city. Nothing, in other cities, they would. Absolutely, they would. So by council not recognizing that.
We recognize it, stop saying that we don't recognize it. We're spending ten minutes on the last ten minutes we have on it. We're recognizing it, we're trying to fit it in here somehow, some way. We need, we need a solution, Gina. Not an argument, I think the argument is there, we need a solution.
Mayor?
Yes.
I hear that you're hesitant on looking at more than two fees. However, if, if we're looking at our staff's time and they're opening up research into the fees based on the nexus study and perhaps the additional county study, because childcare was one of the big, that and, and how many people go hungry, were the two big outcomes of the pandemic of lessons learned, that staff, it's not gonna be any different for staff to look at childcare along with the other fees that other cities have that we don't have. By putting in these fees, the other cities have art fees. We're one of the few that do not. So it's just, it's the same, it's the same amount of staff time, it's still gonna come back to us for a discussion.
I have a solution here, see what you guys think on this. If you look at S I three and number two, which got five votes, top three, quality of life and that is support all communities in need. Could we, it, could we include it there where staff would do an, a, a nexus study on childcare needs in our city? So we could then figure out what kind of fees need to be put in place.
Um, Madam Mayor, I appreciate your efforts along those lines, but I think you'd have to put it under the sustainability in order to do the nexus study.
I'm not sure, I don't know how that works. Tom, can you help me out there?
Yeah, wanted to give this slide, uh, can you repeat the question? I apologize.
So, it, where, where we look at, uh, S I three, uh, life moves park.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, you're.
Support number forty-nine, thank you. Uh, support all communities in need, food insecurity, and that, that received five votes, so it was number three in the quality of life, and I think childcare might fit in well with supporting all communities. Would that, would that have to be under sustainability in order to have a nexus study?
Well, I think childcare comes in many different ways, right? We're gonna be opening up a new community center with a licensed childcare facility on June thirteenth. You know, for the fall, so I mean, I think that that would support forty-nine. I think really what we're talking about is how do we fund additional childcare through new development, and I think that that is different than forty-nine. I think that that does require a, a first of demand study, um, two is, is a nexus study on, um, you know, what is the demand, what is the need for childcare in Millbrae?
So that, that, that study, uh, does that have to be under sustainability? That was Gina said, that, I think Gina just said, it had to be under sustainability in order to do a nexus study.
Well, I, I mean, it could be, I mean, it, it could go here or, I mean, we could put it under sustainability, right? So the long-term sustainability of our, of our quality of life, uh, economic development, um, you know, the need, it, it, it certainly could.
Well, I'm just thinking that this is, this is already a top three goal, so if we added the, uh, childcare in there, then it would fulfill.
Yeah, why don't we, so why don't we do this? I think, I think, um, if, if the council agrees, yeah, we put it under forty-nine. And then we look at, um, child, you know, something like, you know, childcare needs including funding sources, and then that would be, we can come back and say, you know, cause it could be development impact fee, it could be that we require, when we have a development agreement, um, like a T O D two, that a portion of that development is allocated to childcare. Um, we can achieve that objective in, 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 in different ways. I do think a development impact fee is a very good standard way and, and equitable way to achieve that, so everybody's paying their fair share, um, you know, throughout new development, so we could, we could tie that into forty-nine. Um, so we identify it, achieve the objective, I think there's a couple of different ways to achieve that objective, but not lose sight of how we fund it, which would be through a, a development impact fee study in addition to our impact fee program. Remember, the city did not have development impact fees, so the, the first time that the council adopted those is the first time that they were ever introduced and implemented in the city, so I do think we have room. Remember, our fee, during the discussion, our fees per unit, you know, there was, there was some commentary about, hey, they're getting pretty high. Uh, but well, you know, we can study that and, and look at it. So it's objective, objective oriented, you know, to, to, to achieve more daycare and preschool, one of the mechanisms would be a development impact fee.
Anne had her hand up as well.
I just, what I heard, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to finish this and then we'll go to you, council member Schneider. Vice Mayor, would you be, would you be good with putting it into forty-nine?
Uh, I think it just, it's going to get lost in that mix. If we're gonna study fees, I think it needs to be a part of the fee that were listed, so no, I would not.
Okay, well, the study fees, the study fees did not make the top three, so I'm, we're trying to make this fit for you.
I believe down on the sustainability, it is in the top percentage.
No, it's not.
It's not, no, yeah, Madam Mayor, I would suggest if it's gonna be anywhere, it would be within forty-nine, since we already voted.
Yes, the other ones.
S I four and there were other priorities.
I agree with you, Ruben, a hundred percent, but the vice mayor has to agree.
Well, if it's the only place we can get it in, I did think that six, I bet it got six votes down there, the, the fees.
Didn't make. Can you, can someone scroll to S I four with the votes?
You, and, and just FYI, everybody, it's seven oh four, and we have people waiting for us, so.
Um, the top three goals under fiscal sustainability is development impact fees. What I heard Tom say was it could go in both places, and it probably needs to go in both places because it's talking about a funding source.
So it is in the top three.
Tied, yeah. And which we have to pick one, because we can't take everything.
No, that's not what we've done in the past. We've usually taken the six strategic initiatives and chosen the top three in each. And do the best we can.
I, I agree. Let, let's put them in both places so we don't lose sight of it. And then when we come back, you know, we, you know, the council has an opportunity to take what you prioritize here and further prioritize. Citywide, we can have the discussion. Look, I, I hear you loud and clear, and I get it, and I think it is important. And we won't, we won't lose sight of it.
Okay. I, I think we found a solution to this, okay? We're gonna put it in both places, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting if everybody's okay.
Well done. Painful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was good. This, this was great, I think.
All right, do we have another link, or do we stay on?
We just stayed, don't we?
Yes.
All right.
I gotta, I gotta pull up the.